If I didn't tell you what I know that I would be a cell of resistance in my name. I'm about to bring the hell out. Start a pop, start a pop, pour it out, yeah. Start a pop, start a pop, pour it out. I am not your nigga, I'm the Moorish American's hell. My name is written down in those scriptures, I'm not spellbound. You're a section free from tyranny, you can tell now. A long paper trail if I burn it, change my whereabouts. Don't care what you trying to tell me now or how you perceive the truth. You gotta dig deeper into review and oh, oh, he do.
Copyright disclaimer. Under section 107 of the Copyright Act of 1976, allowances made for fair use for purposes such as criticism, comment, news reporting, teaching, scholarship, and research. Fair use is permitted by copyright statute that might otherwise be infringing. Nonprofit, educational, or personal use tips the balance in favor of fair use. Islam, 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 we are here, we are here, we are here. For thirty minutes more or less, probably less because I gotta go make dinner. Anyway, welcome truth seekers, you know? All of our illustrious Moorish Americans and those awakening to the true essence of our birthright, nationality, and history to our Sabbath study session. I actually made an end on a Saturday, Islam. So, you know, I'm not, I'm a try not to rush through this. But again, you know, there's people waiting for me to cook who could very well cook for themselves, but I'm not gonna go get into that, you know, life of a mom, right? So anyway, um, today's session is titled Great Substance, right? AKA Free Money But No People, alright, Great Substance. So, um, before I begin, a couple of announcements, right? Uh, we, I just got the proof in today for the new color edition. Yes, of Hidden in Plain Sight by Brother Kush Day, right? Available for pre-sale and if you get it before the 12th, it'll be like, uh, I guess, it'll be, it'll be a discount on it, um, at least 10% off. So yeah, get that, the new color edition. This is just the proof, so don't mind that bar. Second announcement, summer study sets for Moorish youth is forthcoming. Summer study sets, right? Cause um, you know how you get just downloads and it's like, huh, that'd be a good idea. Summer's coming up, you know, so why not give our youth something to do? So that we can, you know, direct our future by influencing our youth ourselves and not leaving it up to others to do it, right? So, um, look for that, that'll be forthcoming, that'll be like a handwriting practice. Um, that's like geared toward helping them memorize our constitution and our prophecies and all that good stuff. And plus they're improving their handwriting and learning about our history. So yeah, just be on the lookout for that, um, very, very soon. So, uh, again, another announcement, fair warning, alright? I'm going through a little bit right now, so if this goes all over the place, I apologize in advance because if you all know, right? Um, there's a, if you haven't heard, there's an eclipse coming up, uh, in a couple of days, on August 8th, right? And I actually did, I did the astrology for it and it's like, whoa, okay, this should be interesting. I wonder what's about to happen? And I wonder if it has something to do with what I'm about to present and share with you all, right? So this real quick, this, and I suggest you all look up your astrology, look up your chart and do a transit chart with your birth chart to see how this thing is gonna affect you over the course of a year. Because you will have a, this is just like the flicking of a switch and you have a year to get something in place, right? Um, so the eclipse is at nineteen degrees of Aries, which is a trip, it's like our new year, it's like, it's like a fresh, clean new slate. And here, right now, I'm proposing that we, the Moors, set this as our new year. Are you kidding me? It's an eclipse on the real beginning of Aries. Because I don't know why people think that the month begins in the middle of where the moon is. It's like, doesn't a new month begin at the new moon, new moon, right? So this is a new moon in Aries. I propose that we set this as our new year because some stuff about to pop off. Cause it's in Aries, but Mars is in Pisces right now, so it's not gonna be violent, it's gonna be insistent spirituality. Alright, so, and then I felt compelled to do something like this today. And here come a more asking me to do what I do today, what I'm getting ready to do today. And then I checked my horoscope and it said, you know what, you need to say something. Something about something you love and you believe in and you really feel passionate about because people might be a little more open to it today. So Islam to you all who are here right now and Islam to you all who will see this later, you know, because hey, it came to you and I'll get into that in a minute. So those are my announcements, right? So this is perfect, that led right into, it's like, you know how you feel like, I really want to, I really want to, and then something pop, if you're in alignment, something happens, it's like, hey, somebody, in my case, somebody asked me to actually do it. So, um, the DM that inspired it, right? And shout out to Brother Heinz Bay, Ronnie Heinz Bay, right? I love that name Ronnie, I don't know why I love that name Ronnie, right? It must be something in my past life or something. But anyway, he sent me, um, or he didn't send me, he sent Mercy Charities an inquiry about whether or not we could help this individual brother. And unfortunately, I had to respond to him, no, we don't fund individuals anymore. We only do groups, right? Because it's more likely if you're part of a group, if one or two of you all fall off, at least that'll be, they're a lot willing, be one or two of you all to continue the month, the mission that we funded, that Mercy Charities and all of his donors funded, right? Cause I got this thing about spending other people's money, it's in my chart, then I can, I'm going to be allowed to be in charge of other people's money. And I don't play with other people's money. My money, yes, other people's, no, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna act like it's mine, I'm gonna act like it's yours. So you were willing to donate to this and this person flaked, but it was five of them, only that one person, so we only do groups. So he asked me, can we help this brother get out of, I forgot what it was, I'm sorry. Um, he said, can we help this brother? I'm like, nope, we can't do it, you can thank rise of the so-called Moors for that, right? And his response was, no doubt, I'll remember that going forward. Question, are you looking for board members? I would love to comprehend the whole grant thing. Possibly able to reduce my plantation hours to focus on nation building soon. Yeah, did you hear that clap? That's what happened when I saw that email, cause I'm like, I wanna say something, but who cares? And then he asked me about that, so praise Allah for that all the time, right? Because, um, I actually took a course on grant writing, right? Like seeking them, how to research them, how to, um, read the requirements, how to issue letters of inquiry, right? And how to write the dang grant itself. And this was in 2001, I wanna say one. And I'm just like, I don't, I have, this happens to me a lot, I have no idea what I'm going to do with this, but I'm being led to do it, so let me just get it. I have no idea where it's gonna go. Fast forward three years, I should mention, I do inject astrology in this a lot because I love the blend of, um, physics and how it reflects in the spirituality. I should have mentioned, I'm also a Libra rising, so there must be balance. So I need the mundane and the metaphysical to be present so I can be interested, alright? So, um, my moon is conjunct Saturn. Moon is with, with women, it rules like how you are a woman, the moon, right? Men and everybody, it rules how you feel, but in women, it really rules how you are as a woman, right? Mine is conjunct Saturn. So, moon controls what makes you feel good and nourished and fulfilled. And mine is conjunct Saturn. People say it's the worst placement you can have. Mine is, I love to work, it makes me feel good. And I especially love to work with elders and I will get into that, right? And it also says that I'm going to be everybody's mom. It's like, oh, I could do that, you know, it's like, I'll, it's like, okay, in addition to running a book company, a charity, it's like, okay, I spend four hours a day on that. Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, Mercy Charities. Uh, Sundays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, um, Khalifa Media, right? Four hours for each one because the other sixteen hours I'm awake, I gotta be a mom. Or whatever, take up four hours, I only spend four hours a day on my stuff. Because the rest of the time, I'm a mom, right? And I'm just like, I got a feeling this gonna come in handy one day, right? And it's starting to come in handy because this brother said, free me, I'm on it. Turns out I've been on it, right? So shout out to Brother Heinz Bay again for bringing this up. Because, um, and I appreciate how he did it, because he kept bringing up this same question over and over again, right? He asked me this at least three times that I can remember, but he only did it when it came up. So shout out to Brother Heinz Bay, I really appreciate you for not being annoying and for reminding me of my, uh, 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 my rampant procrastination that I really gotta work on, because that's not cool, you shouldn't have had to ask me three times. Because I know me personally, I can't ask more than one, because then it sounds too much like begging. And I'll get into that, right? So, so yeah, shout out to Brother Heinz Bay, you were real smooth with it, right? Compliments, you know? So before I begin, you know, as usual, I always start with, um, definitions, right? So instead of diving into my ancient books, I'm like, okay, I know what the times that we're in right now and just because the truth is written down, that doesn't mean people are adhering to it. So let me see what people are working with in these days and times. So our first definition is philanthropy, right? And I went to, where's this site? The Lilly Family School of Philanthropy. Please remember that name, Lilly Family. And shame on me, I haven't done my research on who these people are, because it must be more than one, right? Because of that word right there. Um, that name's gonna come up again. So the Lilly Family School of Philanthropy at the Indiana University in Indianapolis. So philanthropy now means goodwill to fellow members of the human race. Does that sound familiar? Sounds like something Prophet Drew Ali said to me. Um, active effort to promote human welfare, uplift fallen humanity? Okay. An act or gift done or made for humanitarian purposes. An organization distributing or supported by funds set aside for humanitarian purposes. So again, I'mma shout out Brother Heinz Bay, I hope I'm saying your names right, right? Please, um, get up with me again, again, and let me know if I'm saying it wrong. But, um, yeah, for getting me into this, because, okay, again, so it's goodwill to fellow members of the human race. Active effort, active effort to promote human welfare. I'm just like, this sounds too much like what we're, we as Moors, right? Whether in the temple or without the temple, we're supposed to be doing this, you know? You know, you feel the pull to assist, you know, you feel it, right? Um, hopefully you're sincere and you're not greedy about it, because you can get rewards without being greedy about it, right? And, um, you got, I'm just like, wait a minute. I Googled this to make sure I have the modern definition of it and it brought me to a school of philanthropy. That should tell y'all, this is a thing where people are actually going to school to study this and it's mostly graduate programs. And yeah, I might be getting into it because I'm like, well, y'all teaching people how to have stuff donated. I'm figuring y'all got a way for me to do this for free, right? And I happen to live in this state and I happen to be getting ready to move down here or I'm considering it, it's really crazy, Allah is the greatest, that's all I can say. Anyway, so, um, so the next definition, so that was philanthropy. The next definition, um, was my next definition, so philanthropy, yes, I have my notes, because why? I respect your time. So the next definition is foundation. And this is from convention, the convention, here we go. What is it? The Convention on Biodiversity International, right? So this is like what international philanthropic organizations have agreed is the definition of a foundation, right? And, um, right there is right there, first thing, real quick, I'mma read it to y'all. Philanthropic foundations or simply foundations are nonprofit, non-governmental organizations or NGOs. I'mma just insert that we, Mercy Charities, the charity set up for Moors to do something with it is, our bank set us up as an NGO, I didn't ask them to do that. Anyway, so, uh, a non-governmental organization with principal funds established by wealthy individuals, groups, or corporations to make grants to charitable organizations. Foundations are managed by their own trustees or directors, just like our temple. Some such entities use the term so-called trust or so-called fund rather than foundation in their names, such as pure charitable trusts. Also, some organizations that are called foundations, such as National Parks Foundation, are not philanthropic foundations. Rather, they raise money to carry out their own programs. Since these terms can cause confusion, it is important to research the foundation one is considering through a directory or through the internet. So we have set up ourselves in a directory, a very, very, very expensive directory for the benefit of the Moors and we will be getting into that. So the next definition, because I'mma try to stay on task, because I gotta go cook, is grants. Um, and this is grants from IRS.com, because these are the people who will probably give us the most problems. Would have if I hadn't set up, if I hadn't put Drew Ali over everything like he told us to do, right? So grants as defined as the, by the IRS. Grants include the following types of expenditures. Scholarships, fellowships, internships, prizes, and awards. Remember that scholarships part. Loans for charitable purposes. Um, program-related investments. Payments to exempt organizations to further the organization's exempt purposes. Grants do not ordinarily include following types of expenditures. As Moors, we know, when they say shall or may or might or, um, do not ordinarily, you know, there's some, there's a, um, what is that? There's a loophole, they're showing you the loophole, right? And that's what you need to look up next, right? Islam to everybody who's joined, I appreciate y'all. Um, so please, and thank you all, because I'm glad you're here for whatever reason you're here and I hope that we can work together, because you must be here for a reason. Because I always believe people, I hide, I actually hide, right? And I figure if you found me, we must be supposed to be doing something together. So yeah, please pay attention, take notes if you like. Alright, anyway, so, um, that's, oh, grants do not ordinarily include the following types of expenditures. Do not ordinarily. Salaries or compensation to employees. Payments to persons for personal services in helping a foundation. Um, plan, evaluate, or develop projects or areas of program activity by consulting, advising, or participating on conferences organized by the foundation. So what the IRS is saying, oh yeah, grant, somebody can, can give you some money for your project and you don't have to pay them back, but usually, not always, sometimes, not always. It's not meant to reward the people who are actually putting in that work so they can survive. So that takes us to the next definition, uh, next definition. Operating Grant, right? What is an operating grant? And this is from business.com, alright? Operating Grant. An operating grant known as an unrestricted grant, because there is restricted grants, you can only do this, an unrestricted grant. Do what you want with it, here you go, because we appreciate what you're doing. An unrestricted grant is a working capital fund given to a nonprofit organization to support its general mission and pay for overhead expenses such as rent, salaries, which the IRS said you don't usually get, furniture, and other day-to-day costs of running a business, which they just said you don't usually get, usually. Operating Grants are highly sought after thanks to their unrestricted nature. Organizations are free to use their funds as they see fit. They're highly sought after, so what could make you stand out where you're the one that's chosen? We'll get to that and I'm glad y'all here, because hopefully y'all gonna get a piece of this, right? Because unless y'all, if y'all haven't heard, you know, that's my next tattoo. I got a butterfly tattoo and my next one is a golden goose, right? Because I love laying eggs, what can I do with these eggs, right? Anyway, so our next definition is private grant versus public grant. So what's the difference between a pi- public and a private grant funding? And this is from kayusei.com, I hope I'm saying that correctly, kayusei. Um, so the definition they gave, so, um, it says, grant funding is simple. Public funding comes from federal, public funding comes from federal, state, or another publicly funded agency, so from tax money, right? Private funding does not entail public funds and may include both grants and gifts depending on that organization's mission, alright? So now that we know the definitions, let's look into what the Moors are leaving on the table. Because this brother asked how to escape the plantation, right? Because I escaped the plantation, I just, you know, like, oh, look at those sharp rocks, I think Allah catch me. Uh, I had to bounce a couple of times, but now I'm floating, right? And I wanna share and if you don't believe me, I'm, I set up a found, I set up a charity so I can help Moors, right? It does work and I'm telling you all, I want to, I don't wanna say I wanna be Harriet Tubman, right? It's just that like, here, here goes some stuff I found. If you can do what it is that they're asking for, I can help you get it and I want to help you get it. My thing is, I don't feel like doing the work. I probably can't do the work, but I know how to get access to resources. Do you understand where networking is our biggest problem? Nobody, I think it was, who is it? I cannot remember the brother who said it. Um, he said, we are not outnumbered, we are not outsmarted, we're outorganized. Because our people are all in their corners doing their own separate thing. I'm putting this out, letting you know, here's what I am capable of, that I am willing to do for you, right? Did you hear me ask for anything in return? It's one of those things like, why do painters paint? You ever heard of broke starving artists? Why they're starving? Because the art means that much to them, alright? But this can actually benefit all of us and it will, considering the energies that's going on right now and I'mma get into that. But anyway, so what are Moors leaving on the table? Because, um, I'm not gonna say no names, but I'mma just put out a scenario that why I'm glad Brother Heinz Bay asked me about this. I actually reached out to a group and told them all this, like, I know how to do this. You all are already doing stuff. Can I help it, help y'all where you don't have to come out of pocket for this? Because I've already, it's not a scam, because I'm finding other people offering to do this if you know how to ask them the right way. It all comes down to, how did you ask them, right? So I sent that to them, I saw they saw it and no response. I'm like, okay, I can't, it's a personal hangup of mine. I can't ask more than once because it feels too much like begging, considering, especially considering what I'm doing. So, oh, here's a GoFundMe that I can donate on their behalf. And oh, here's the organizer, let me email him first and then show him that I'm serious by making a donation. Haven't heard back. Okay, I'mma leave it alone, because my thing is, I'm here to observe, right? I got a front row seat to the fall of Rome 2.0 or 3.0, wherever we are right now. And I'mma, I'mma assist where I can, but I'm not going to force myself on anyone. And then Brother Heinz asked me, hey, how you do that? So okay, here we are, right? So anyway, what are Moors leaving on the table one more time? Um, this is from Tags, Tags, right? Tags, it's called Tracking Accountability and Government Grant System, Tags, right? Because I'm like, okay, how much money are we actually talking about? Because based on how downtrodden our people have been for a very, very long time, right? At least since 1500, um, we can't fathom how much abundance there is out there, despite the fact there are numerous billionaires, millions of millionaires, but we can't see how we can be a part of that, right? Not to give too much credit to KRS once, but, one, but you know that line. Visualize wealth and put yourself in the picture, but our people have a problem doing that. So you don't know what's possible, some people don't know what's possible until they, they are shown what's possible. I don't know what a million dollars look like until somebody shows me a million dollars. So let me show you some stuff. How much money are we not taking advantage of, right? So I looked it up, um, let's go down, let's go through it. So, uh, let's see, total financial assistance given by the United States government in 2023, okay, was 1.78 trillion dollars, trillion, okay? That's how much they gave out, that's not how much was offered and I'll get into that, right? The total awards, so they gave out 100, 1.78 trillion dollars in the form of 143,468 awards, right? Whatever those were, grants, um, because it could be grants or contracts, I'm not sure which one it is, I just found this today. So the awards, it was 143,000 and some, um, awards, it totaled 100, one, 1.78 trillion, see how big these numbers are, right? So 1.78 trillion split between 143,468 awards. Total recipient was 16,411 people. 16,411 people split 1.78 trillion dollars. Do you know why? Because nobody else bid, I did the math, right? And if my math is mapping, each one of these 16,000 was, they won an average of eight to nine awards apiece. These are public, public contracts, these are not like Raytheon and the government, not those big companies. These are the ones that set aside for, um, who is that? Um, small businesses, that's why that number is so small. You know, the Pentagon gets like eight billions or eight trillions, something like that, a year. This is what they gave away in grants to small businesses and individuals in 2023. And it was only 16,000 recipients got this. Why only 16,000? Because in my experience, people who don't even begin to meet the requirements or already have, or they've already received a few grants, remember I said they got between eight to nine grants on average? Even though you don't qualify and you've already gotten two of these grants, nobody else applied. So here you go. And then you wonder why there's government waste. Fine, you can waste that on me, how about that? Or waste that on us, because I'm not selfish. Why would I set up, I set up, you know, real talk, I set up a charity because I was scared of having all that money in my bank account, it made me nervous. And then you know how that goes, I try to give away 20, here comes 60 or sometimes 200, right? Because you take one step towards Allah, Allah takes 10 steps towards you. So, next, show me the money. Where is all this? 499 billion was donated privately. I think that was a combination of, and that's in 2022 and that might have been in a combination, but that's like they, they're calculating foundations and individuals. And it turns out individuals give more than foundations. I can testify to that because, um, Khalifa, or Mercy Charities is sitting on quite a, a little, a, 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 a fat egg, if you wanna see, you gotta go on mercycharities.org, it's right up there, you can see it, because I believe in full transparency, because we've, and that's only from individual donors. And it turns out individual donors donate the most. But anyway, so in addition to the 1.73 billion that the federal government is making available in the form of grants and contracts for small businesses and individuals, here's, at least in 2022, 500 billion from private donors. So what's Moors' problems, right? Um, so let me continue on, let me go through my notes so I don't get off track, but I gotta go cook. Um, okay, so where is all this stuff? Where you find all this stuff? Let me show you where we find all this stuff. Here we go, private grants, this is where you find the private money, right? You can access this through, at most libraries, right? I can't say all, but I think most libraries have it. And, um, what this is, this is a database of, I, I think it's like everybody that's registered as a, a, a foundation or a private donor and everybody that's registered as a charity to receive those donations. And we're set up in this, you know? Shout out to, you know, shameless plug, Khalifa Media donated to get this subscription. So me personally, I don't have to go down to the library, because it's a little distance away from me. Um, to use this, I can just use it whenever I want and if somebody lets me know what they're doing, I can go in here whenever I feel like it and look up something for you, or for instance, right? I feel like it and look up something for you or for instance right um so yeah so we have access to this sixteen hundred dollar gift until January twenty-five again we have access so they got an example up in here it says ballet school in New York City animal shelter blah 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 so um I could put up in there um children uh-oh programs um Indiana cuz that's where I am and this thing is crazy because it will tell me how many people are doing that here so it's one thousand eighteen hundred one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight people or grant makers those are the one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight individuals or organizations are doing this for this right and there are thirteen thousand plus grants two thousand plus recipients so thirteen thousand grants split between two thousand recipients that's telling you how much money is being left on the table because they're going back and double dipping because nobody else is asking right and then it goes in and it lists all the people it's doing here and it's yeah it's it's eighteen hundred results and then it actually goes in and tells you who got the who got those grants so you can see what are they doing because I might be doing something that they're doing because they must be doing something right because they got one of these grants and then it goes in and shows you how much they got you it's like you generalize like what did they get who are they what's their what are their moves how much did they get because maybe I can see how I act the same way and use that when I go and apply for this stuff mercy charities is set up to be a bomb a fiscal sponsor where if you are not set up as a five oh one C three we can get the grant for you and fund you we'll just be in charge of um submitting all the paperwork to make sure you're in compliance which we're willing to do that's the part it's like I think people think this is like there's a catch it's very frustrating knowing that you know how to do something and you're willing to do it and nobody and you feel like nobody wants it right um yeah drives me nuts so um next part what did I go to let me okay um so that's where founded that's where the private grants are and we have access to that until January of twenty twenty-five so the public grants alright I'm done with that the public grants right I just got done with setting up all of my um businesses in sam.gov because sam.gov you go in here and you get all your stuff set up and that gives you access to like um international contracts um grants so you go through here this is your hub and then you can sign up for all the other government money I am not working for the government I'm giving them a chance to get to give me my stuff back and also free my people while I'm at it right um and then I don't know if some of you all are aware of the prophet how the moors weren't paying taxes in Chicago because they weren't employed through any this is before income tax anyway was it no it wasn't um so they weren't paying taxes because everybody was working through the temple so the temple I wanna work for and this actually happened I wanna work for Al Capone's hotel right true story I wanna go work cuz I'm from Chicago true true story I wanna work for Al Capone's hotel Al Capone wants to hire me but he won't hire me unless I bring a whole bunch of my people with me why is that because he said moors are the only ones he can trust not to steal from his um patrons right um so instead of um hiring me as a more I went took myself to the temple and let the prophet or his secretary know what was going on and the temple contracted with Al Capone or his whatever he has set up on behalf of these moors so um the temple was contracting with this hotel the hotel was paying the temple and then the temple was distributing funds to the moors who were doing all that work okay that's what this is so give me what's rightfully mine because the only reason you're able to do this because you're sucking my resources so I'm I'm not gonna like you know I'm not gonna go the long route and try to get you kicked out the country cuz I might turn into Moses and you know that might outlive me so in the meantime let me get let me apply for some of these these um funds because once again what was it one point seven trillion with a T grants and contracts distributed between sixteen thousand recipients so it's not saying um I'm we bullying people out the way it's like oh sorry you couldn't get eight contracts you only got five this year I think they'll be alright alright so um this is sam.gov we're already set up if you want to set up your own stuff I can it's a lengthy process right you gotta go back and forth cuz it's bureaucracy I just got done I started this process last year I just got done yesterday okay I think it's exactly a year later and I'm waiting for one more thing right so I guess I'm not technically done but we're already set up if you wanna set up your own thing I would be glad to help you uh assist you with that um no cost because for what anyway um so next is grant.gov again you go in and sam.gov get your all your stuff all set up and then they say well when you go here you have to log in with whatever you set up in sam.gov that's why I just said it's lengthy and it's bureaucracy but um yeah I got this um highlighted but I guess I highlighted an opportunity and not the website itself which is perfect cuz this segues into um all the public money this is like okay y'all paying taxes to Rome right and they have these funds allocated for receipt by the so-called public it's like okay we gonna steal a hun we gonna steal all this money for it from you and then we're gonna give it back like maybe thirty percent back in the form form funds and it's a lot of money it's a lot right and it's stuff that moors are doing for other people and I'm just like y'all could be working for yourselves right how many times you say oh this so oh this podcaster he's gone for a couple of months because he's working on a grant so he don't have to work for a couple of years right um no yeah okay so it's like Al Capone had a whole yeah Al Capone was a bitch what you think he was doing with that money laundering money how do you launder money alright you gotta put it through different you gotta wash it through different businesses have you if you've ever seen uh Breaking Bad you know instead of having a car wash he had hotels and casinos and you know speakeasies and all that stuff but anyway um so this is the federal level right there's also the local level what's going on in your state what's going on in your county what's going on in your city all of them have this exact thing going on right I just did federal because I'm like that's the easiest one to go in because it's just one thing and then I can like once I get good at that I can whittle it down to the specifics of county and municipal and all that stuff right but that's here um so anyway yeah a lot of people have left their job doing this contracting stuff alright some examples like I said I I I guess I bookmarked an actual grant opportunity right so the grant this grant was what is this um the so the closing date this how you read these when is it due I gotta have it due by May twenty-second so there's still like a month and some time left over and the the least they'll give you if you apply and win it is ten thousand the most they'll give you is twenty-five thousand and there's four awards expected what is this even for um this is for oh I remember this one this was why I was gonna sign up for something else this is for a mission a US mission to Jamaica who wanna go to Jamaica and get the United States to pay for it a mission to Jamaica you imagine they are issuing grants for people to go to Jamaica to represent this country hello anybody interested I'm just saying and it's just like I'm willing to go get the money can somebody else please organize this do you know some moors who wanna go to Jamaica and represent us and they'll pay for it because there's it can't be to set up an embassy cuz there's four awards they're giving away four of them and guess what one person is probably gonna apply and get all four that's how that happens alright and the total funding is a hundred thousand dollars how far will a hundred thousand we could set up a temple in Jamaica with this do you think they would be willing to help us anyway and I'm gonna get into they they on both well they as in they the United States not they in Jamaica cuz I think they'd be down for it anyway so that's one that I accidentally clicked on that's a grant alright I'm gonna get into some more grants in a second this contract thing brother Ronnie um so you go into Sam and I think you can just like search this without having to sign in right you go into Sam where is it and um contract opportunities contract after two I get into this one because I don't know if y'all know my mother worked for GSA for like I don't know eight at least eighteen years she was like a big muckety muck she was up there she was like regional something right and um so she was the one who was awarding these contracts so I'll just leave that right there yeah I grew up with somebody who was awarding this and I got to hear everything so you come in here and I like I put in janitorial just to search it cuz this is the one that'll get you retired but what you can retire at forty-five cuz don't nobody wanna do it right so if you don't mind emptying trash cans or hiring somebody else managing and hiring managing a company where somebody is picking up trash emptying dumpsters mopping floors dusting you know maybe sanitizing once in a while three hundred and fifty-one contracts currently for people doing janitorial all over this country and internationally okay remember what I just said about the moors working for Al Capone fifteen pages of opportunities we're set up we're set up ready to go right what are we missing people the always same problem people for want of a nail right if you've ever heard that um that fable so um that's contracted you could type in anything like I would type in me I would type in um printing I don't know because I do I run a book company so printing right and search for it you can do this without setting up an account right and just see what's out there so it's twenty-five oh a hundred and seventy-three opportunities printers equipment harassment policy mailings okay I would do that I can do I can do mailers how much are they offering uh let's see so I'm just going through showing y'all what's out here so I would have to go through yeah it's a thing yeah it's a thing so you would actually have to go to their specific website this government agencies so the printing the publishing officer office you'd have to go through their website and I've been to their website they always got tons of contracts up right um and I'm like should I just shut down my company my book company or leave it like on on idle and just do this cuz this looks like real a lot of fun so that's the contracts right there's also what is this I don't know oh grants right here go the grants these grants are crazy so um this is the National Endowment for the Humanities right and you just click here on grants oh how did I find this I found this because every single day every single day see where it says do not reply do not reply do not reply these are emails I'm signed up with you know like a mailing list from grants.gov can you let me know when a new grant is available in these specific areas they email me every single day and I'm like oh it must just be they're repeating the same ones and cuz the the emails are quite lengthy right no they're not repeating the same ones cuz once upon one of these grants I was looking at they actually published an update and that was the only thing in the email so these are all the different government grants right and I'm not saying we work for the grant the government these are monies that's been allocated I say we gonna get our stuff because where are they getting these funds and resources from um right oh let me go back to this one grant so that's why I said the national you can go to the National Endowment for the Humanities because they emailed me something about it and it led me to this website for the the this is a government agency the National Endowment for the Humanities right and you click on grants and it's a ton of stuff right but thing is stuck out to me right cultural and community resilience this one they're they're paying people to record somebody's experience of how covid changed their their whole paradigm right and I don't know how many moors I've heard say twenty twenty was the best year of my life okay do you wanna can I record you saying that in detail cuz they'll pay us for it right and um this is like an ongoing one because man it's been going I've actually looked into it this you see how old this picture is this fund has been going on for a long time so you could spend like oh I just found this in twenty twenty-four let me do all my research and then apply for it in twenty twenty-five alright that kinda thing maximum award one hundred fifty thousand dollars and I would love to record the child the difference between the children who went to school pre covid and the ones who didn't go to school post code or who went to school post covid like they were stuck at home for instance my daughter was stuck at home right and by the time she went back to school or went to school which I eventually pulled her out of um because of her being stuck at home when she went to school she didn't know what black people were or what white people were she had no idea what they were talking about at school get it so and that could be juxtaposed with their parents' experience they're willing to pay you to do that you know some are you already around moors some people are willing to pay you to talk to them it's wild and they got a whole thing where they've been doing this like since the forties or fifties or something right they wanna just get people's stories down so they can see the highs changing over time um so that's the uh oh the one that I really liked um so here goes some ones I would love to go after them but my thing is I'm a Gemini alright so my attention span is microscopic so it'll be like oh let me get that okay that's done oh let me get that okay that's done so I hop from thing to thing and it's like can you can you just take care of that from for forever type of thing and um it'll take care of you promise um oh my pictures here we go that's what I'm looking for these okay so this one elder grant it's an elder grant alright this mug is talking about um it's due in June and I'm considering going to go get it but I don't know if I can do it because it's just me I'm one person I know that I am one person you know I have no 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 problem admitting that and I admit I know that one person can't do this so the least they'll give you for applying is a dollar but the most they'll give you is twenty million alright there's one hundred fifteen million dollars allocated and twenty awards anticipated remember what I just said how trillion dollars four hundred thousand awards were sent were split between sixteen thousand people because they applied they probably just got all of them right um so I'm like okay I love like I said my moon is conjunct Saturn I love elders I can't get enough of them I think it's it's cuz they make me feel childlike right cuz they're old they're older they're like parents right so what is this thing so this grant is for from the Department of Urban and of Housing and Urban Development it says the section two oh two supportive housing for the elderly program provides capital advanced funding for development of supportive re re supportive rental housing for very low income persons aged sixty-two or older and project rental subsidies subsidies in the form of project rental assistance contract to maintain ongoing affordability this program provides elderly persons with the opportunity to live independently but with important voluntary support such as nutritional transportation continuing education and or health related services in addition this year's uh notice of financial offering NFO includes funding to support the development and intergenerational housing of elderly caregivers raising children how many of our women do you know raising their grandbabies intergenerational dwelling units are also referred to as intergenerational housing for this NFO capital advanced funds must be used to finance construction reconstruction moderate or substantial rehabilitation how about all those broke down buildings in Chicago and all over Chicago right New York all those broke down buildings or acquisition of a structure with or without rehabilitation capital advanced funds bear no interest and repayment is not required provided the housing remains available for occupancy for by very low income elderly persons for at least forty years here go a project and this is the thing this is to get you started right this is to get you started these people who where are they these people keep you going Foundation Directory these are the ones that keep you going because they're private donors so they're like yeah we willing to fund you but we don't wanna pay for the whole thing right like we'll buy beds if you got a building anybody interested right how many people wanna help our children our elderly and our children are you kidding me are you kidding me right and this ain't limited didn't say nothing about grandmothers it just said elders these could be grandfathers too me personally I got this thing about helping dudes it's like are you kidding me are women and children I'm a folk me personally I focus on the women and the children alright because I figure men are stronger than me and are not saddled with three children and might as well have four cuz the one in college still keeps sucking off me if I'm able to do this y'all better not need my help if you do come ask for me come ask me for some help I dare do come ask me for some help for real so yeah my thing is are you kidding me these people are willing to to help you give you at least a dollar up to twenty million dollars up to twenty million dollars to house your old people who are taking care of their grandbabies. Or in some of our cases, great, great grandbabies. And you know, you know somebody like that, right? I am willing to do that work. I have already downloaded all the paperwork, but I'm just like, what if I get it? What if I get it? Then what? I got twenty million dollars sitting in my account and nobody to help me. I guess I might go have to hire some foreigners to do this, right? Which is why it's like, I'm not, I would rather not do it. I would, I would rather not do it than to hire them. So if I sound a little passionate, it's because I, I'm a little, you, right? You know how we all got our part to play in this? My thing is acquisition. I could care less about the funds. I just like, I just like the thrill of getting it, right? And then I forget about it because I want on my way to the next, alright? If you all haven't seen what um, Mercy Charities did last year, that's why Mercy Charities has been so quiet this year. And this is not a shed, not to shade the, the board members on Mercy, because we actually have board members. Um, a lot of this is me just because I move so fast. That's all that Aries energy I have. And now this thing is just jacking it up, right? So I just move fast and I let them know every other month in our board meeting, meetings. Yeah, this is what I did. And you know, if they, if they aren't watching Instagram, they might not know what's going on. And it, since I bring that up, we are actually looking for board members, but you actually gotta bring something. Can't just be like, I'm on the board. No, what do you hear the do, right? What's your aim? Because um, I go on to Foundation Directory and it's kind of like pointless, right? Because my thing is flowing. I have my thing going on, right? And it's just like, well, it, it, you know how you can't get interested in it if you can't see the, 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 the purpose? Like I, I'm fine. I'm fine, right? I wish somebody had something they, you know, I wish somebody could tell me what they want to look up, right? You see what I mean? Like, oh, I want a contract on, oh, I don't know, teaching children financial literacy. You do know banks pay for that. They'll be glad to pay for that because they got to set aside a certain number of, a certain amount of their um, their ill-gotten gains. You know how that is? You know, yeah, I stole a million, I'm gonna give away twenty-five thousand. Why don't you put your hand out or allow me? But I don't know if you did it if you don't say nothing. So why am I banging on the Moors about this? I'm about to wrap this up. I don't know how long I've been on here. Again, so why am I being so pushy? Because we're prophesized to come out of this mess with great substance, right? Uh, scripture says, is this a countdown? Uh-oh. Okay, it says scripture says, I don't know what's going on. Scripture says, um, nothing about, so okay, let me start over. We are prophesized to come out of this mess with so-called great substance, right? That's a scriptural reference. And it says nothing about it being delivered, that we actually got to go and get it, right? So what does the Bible say? At least referring to, I'm referring to some other stuff too. But from the Bible, Exodus twelve thirty-five through thirty-six, right? Now the sons of Israel had done according to the word of Moses, for they had requested from the Egyptians articles of silver and articles of gold and clothing. And the Lord had given the people favor in the sight of the Egyptians, so that they let them have their requests. Thus they plundered the Egyptians. Yeah. And that's from um, bible.com, plundered the Egyptians. They said, give me, and they gave it over. They didn't have to fight for it. They had to, but they did have to go get it, right? They had to actually say something. And then let's see, Genesis fifteen, uh, verse thirteen through fourteen. And he said unto Abram, know of a surety that thy seed shall be a stranger in a land that is not theirs. They shall serve them and they shall afflict them four hundred years. And also that nation whom they serve I will judge, and afterward they shall come out with great substance. Alright, so again, this, this uh, what is it? This, this eclipse is, is major just because of where it's happening. It's a, it's, this is a real reset. You know how Caucasians always trying to, I'm gonna specifically point them out. They always trying to like force stuff. Oh, we gonna breed some red heifers so we can hurry this up. We gonna put some people in Israel so we can hurry this up, right? We gonna pick on Iran so we can start this third war because we got to get this moving. Then there's the rest of us who wait for signs in the sky, like an eclipse, a total eclipse in Aries of all signs. Yeah, of all. And then they trying to, you know, they predicted the weather for this thing two months ago? How do you predict the month, the weather two months in advance? To me, that sound like you planning on doing something because you know, y'all got the power to block an eclipse. Okay. Anyway, so there's that. And then let's not forget what's from Drew Ali, right? Quote, if the, if the European and other nations are helping me through grants, right? Why not you? I need the people to come get this money and do something with it because you know, they, they want to see you doing something with it. You can't just sit in your account. It is your problem. The Negro problem is being solved only as it can, as it can, and that it, it is by the Moorish National and Divine Movement. If you have a nation, you must have a free national name in order to be recognized by this nation as an American citizen. This is what it's meant by, when it said, seek you, ye first the kingdom of heaven, check, y'all know you Moors, right? And all these things would be added on to you. Now that you know you Moors, what are you, wait, let me start that over. So now that you know you Moors, and now that you know you are old, it's been mentioned in quite a few places. What are you act truly gonna do about it? What are you gonna act, you know, get up and do about it, right? My offer, me personally, again, because I move fast, sign up on our site, site. Did I bring that up? Let me see, is this up? You can either sign up because you're a talented individual or you can let us know what your group is doing by certified Moorish intake form, right? Um, why? What's the aim for this? Alright, to take back the nine areas of activity for our Moorish nation. What are the nine areas of activity? If you're familiar with Neely Fuller and you should be familiar with Dr. Francis Crest Welson, right? The nine areas of activity are economics, education, entertainment, labor, law, politics, religion, sex, war, counterwar, okay? And using the mythical twenty-year story of Yakub, I don't know if y'all familiar with that, right? How his people were causing all those problems? And then he made a deal with the, the Pharaoh or whoever, saying if you give us twenty years and all the resources we need, then we'll be able to go for ourselves. Here we go. It's a reset. This is like a, a straight up reset in the sky, right? And I'm lucky because I'm in like forty-five minutes from right where that X is like intersection, intersecting. So yeah, I get to see the whole thing. I don't know what this is about, right? And I've been here for seven years. Yeah, this gonna be interesting. So anyway, I'm just saying, these people are scared. They're freaking out, right? There's a lot of abundance and a limited number of people are getting it, not because they're actually doing what they need to be doing with it. Because I don't know if you've heard about this one guy. He set up a, um, he set up a homeless shelter for, uh, what was it? Uh, transsexual youth, right? He just got caught up because they just now figured out he's, they ca- they called him up for fraud after he stole a hundred million dollars over the course of like ten years. It took them ten years to notice a hundred million dollars was missing from what he was supposed to be doing with that money. How did he even get that money? Because somebody else didn't apply for it. It's that simple, right? So again, this is my personal offer. I'm not gonna like saddle my cohorts with this. If y'all have something you doing, you can go on our website and sign up and let us know what you doing. Because I'll be glad, I had this thing for a year, right? I'm gonna be using it. And uh, for instance, um, I was looking on one foundation for some grants, right? And then I look at the top on the menu and it says grants, initiatives, uh, donor, donor portal, scholarships. Yet these same people that's giving away grants are giving away scholarships. So now I'm searching for, it's like, well, I'm looking for a grant for my charity. Oh, look, there's a scholarship thing and my son is getting ready to go to school in another year or so, or college. So I might as well. Do you have any children getting ready to go to college? You know, since I'm coming across it anyway, I'll make a list of it and let you know if I know that you're looking for something like that, that kind of thing, right? So lastly, 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 right? What does Mercy Charities get out of this? We get to help for some, such as pretty much everybody on this whole, uh, what is that, foundation, that whole thing. Some of these people, the only motivation they get is that they want to help, right? So they set up a giving apparatus and that, you know, that's why they're there in the first place. They actually went through the, the problem, uh, the trouble because where's my book? And this book is really good. I suggest anybody who's interested in long, boring, financial discussion. It's actually, it's not boring at all, which is funny. Because uh, I don't like math books. Oh, here we go. But this one is good. I think I've shown it to y'all before. Managing foundations and charitable trusts, right? Know your lane before you start talking. So yeah. So yeah, uh, so, um, just a disclaimer as part of this process. So what else do we get out of it? We get to help. But as part of this process, if suc- if successful in obtaining the grant, no more than ten other rewarded funds will be retained by Mercy Charities so we can keep doing this, right? So if we get you two million, we asking for what? Two hundred thousand? I think y'all will be alright. It'll be like that, right? Um, so yeah. And yeah, I think that's all I got. So thank you, y'all. I appreciate y'all for joining me for this explorer, exploration. Thank you again to Brother Ronnie Himes, Bay, I hope I'm saying your name right, for um, asking the question. So again, together in the knowledge of the, the spirit of knowledge and understanding, we forge a future that respects and celebrates our rich heritage and the boundless potential of our united community. Alright, please be sure to share this video. I'm recording this for YouTube. Please be sure to share this video, engage with us in the comments and join us as we continue to uncover and celebrate our heritage and get what's ours, right? Visit caliphamedia.com for more insights, discussions and revelations. And together, let's embrace our past to shape our future, right? Until next time, keep seeking, keep questioning, right? You can email me if you got another question. I'm at islam@caliphamedia.com or tig@mercycharities.org, right? So yeah, keep embracing your true identity, all that good stuff. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching and remember your identity is your legacy, what you gonna do with it. Islam, peace and bye-bye, y'all.